Okay, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. They would all stand for the pleasure of leaders and indication please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. For God, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to meet, to conduct the county business. Lord, we just ask that you would be with us, give us wisdom, knowledge, Lord, as we go about the agenda tonight. Lord, we ask that you would bless each one that's here, Lord, and just help us all to conduct the business that would be the betterment for all of our citizens. Lord, we ask that you would just remember those that a lot of need in our community, Lord, and a lot of sickness. We thank you for all those that are serving, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Mark. Welcome everybody out tonight. Cool out there tonight? Very chilly. We'll change this to the agenda, right? Your motion to approve the agenda?
I moved.
Saget. Motion to saget, all in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Moving on down to public comment. If anyone has anything they'd like to say, talk about, feel free to do so. Seeing none, we'll move on down to the presentation of the board, Wilkes Community College. Dr. Cox, good evening.
Thank you all for having us. Allow us a few minutes here on the agenda here with you tonight. Just a couple of quick things that I want to mention first, and I'm going to call up a couple of our fine leadership team and let them do a quick presentation on some updates on activities here at the Allegheny Center. So first, I know you all have been talking some about the BDC and different possibilities for that space. And I just want to touch on, of course, we're one of the tenants over there in that space. And wanted just to remind the commissioners and more so maybe the public, kind of the nature of the relationship there between the college and the county, as far as the college's utilization of some of that space over there. I think, again, all the commissioners know and our county manager knows, but the public may or may not know, for community colleges, each county has a responsibility or kind of obligation to provide space. For your public schools, of course, K-12, but also for your community college. So for us, and like in Wilkes and Ash, they've built facilities, you know, spent several million dollars building facilities. We've got a $13 million project going on in Ash right now that the county has funded the majority of over there. But here for Allegheny, when the, you know, over the years, that space became available to the BDC. And it was decided by people before us that it would be a mutually beneficial arrangement, just to lease that space for effectively no cost. I think the actual cost is $1 a year, and it's a 20-year term that's renewable. So the college gets to utilize the space, and of course, we provide the programs. So it's worked well, and it's, I think, a good use of that space. We're happy to be over there and partner to have the library over there and the other folks. But I just wanted to clarify that point to make sure, I didn't want anybody thinking that the college wasn't doing its part, paying rent over there. We're there providing a service, but it's part of the, part of the nature of the relationship that we wouldn't really be paying a lot of rent for that space. The second piece about that space in the college would be, I think you all are all aware, we've applied for a Golden Leaf Foundation grant for this tech academy. And the long-term hope for that is that we would be able to purchase some building space downtown and potentially, in downtown Sparta somewhere, and potentially renovate and outfit a downtown storefront into a kind of a cool tech academy that we could attract students into. They would come through our program, get some foundational courses, but then they'd go into this tech academy and get a lot of real hands-on instruction around things like coding, network security, those kinds of things. That translate, when they finish after a four to six-month internship through that program, the graduates would be going out expecting to make $40,000 to $60,000 a year, ideally in jobs that they could do through telecommuting. Living here in Allegheny County and working, you know, wherever in the world via internet. So that's kind of long-term vision, but the short-term, that's expensive in terms of buying the space and then renovating the space. So one of the possibilities we're looking at and wanted to just bring up to you all to begin thinking about would be a shorter-term solution for some space over there at the BDC, potentially. To get the program up, get it started, get it running, kind of prove the model. And then if, as we're successful with that, I think then, then over a period of years, come back and revisit pushing that program to a downtown location where you could have these young tech folks coming in, working in that space, and frequenting the downtown restaurants and so forth. But that's, I just want to give you a quick update. That application's due to Golden Leaf, I think, February 13th, so it's just about on us. But I just will give you all that quick update. That's, we're just about to submit that application. We don't know if we'll get the grant, but we hope we do. We're excited about the possibility. Any quick questions for me on either of those points?
Questions. Bobby?
I mean, I can't really understand what you're saying, but I'll try to guess what you're talking about. The, you talk about the lease at the BDC.
Yes, sir.
Have you ever considered a long-term lease for the actual, inside the building? I know you've just built the welding shop on the outside.
Right.
So I assume sometimes it's a dangerous thing to do that you have a long-term commitment. Have you considered a long-term lease at the BDC building?
It's my understanding that we have both. That is, that there's a long-term lease on the, for the building space itself that we're occupying with classrooms and that we're utilizing inside. And that the outside, where we just built that new welding shop, that there's a secondary, parallel 20-year lease on that, on that space, essentially built so that we can build that building.
Well, I'm talking about like a 25 or 30-year lease, which would release some money from the state to help have maintenance at that part of the building. They won't do it on a short-term lease.
Right. I think our-
I don't know what the lease-
I think our lease is 20 years and it's renewable beyond that. So my understanding, Bobby, would it would be, it would meet that guideline so that if there's a particular maintenance need on that building, I think we could have that conversation about, you know, to what extent could we help out with some sort of maintenance on that building?
So let's, let's find out what the lease agreement is, and if the state requires maybe a few more years.
Absolutely. If it's, it'd help the county and it would help us. So, and there's, oh, as you probably well know in the legislature already about a potential, another bond referendum coming, in the coming legislative session. So if that were to happen, and we were to get some more money freed up for repairs and renovation, we certainly want to be in that position where we could get, make sure Allegheny County gets its proportion of our, you know, whatever allocation we get from the college. We want Allegheny County to be able to benefit from that, and that space would really be the only, only place where that would make sense for us. So, yeah, good question. We'll, we'll circle back and make sure, but I'm about 95% sure our current arrangement would allow for that, would it have been a 20-year lease. I think that's the magic number, has to be 20 years. All right. Well, I've got two folks I want to just ask to step up and give a quick update on some of our program, including that new welding shop that we've, that we just finished over there. But you all know Susan Nilo, she's a familiar face here, a local, local, how do I say it, local girl. It's not her, her girl, that's kind of insulting, I guess. Susan's a local like myself and has grown up here and does a great job running the Allegheny Center for us over there. So we're proud of her. She's going to have the meeting, the presentation. But beside her is our new Vice President of Instruction, Dr. Yolanda Wilson. So I'm going to ask the two of them to step up. Dr. Wilson can just say hello in a few words, and then turn it over to Susan to give you a few quick highlights about the Allegheny Center. Thank you all for letting us come tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah. I tell you, now that I'm approaching 50, I don't mind being called a girl every now and again. I sure don't feel like it, but I'll take it. Dr. Cox, thank you so much. It's so good to be with you guys this evening. I'm delighted to be a part of this Wilkes Community College family, and it is a family. And so incredibly proud to serve Allegheny County as well as Wilkes and Ash County. And been working very closely with Susan on our new facilities, as far as the welding facility. We're just so proud of that work and the great leadership that she has provided, offering classes there this spring for the first time. So we're delighted about that, the energy that she's created even in the midst of this pandemic virtually, which has had its own share of opportunities or challenges, and she's met those challenges beautifully. So I'm not going to stay before you long, but I just look forward to working with you and, and kind of hearing feedback from you about how we can continue to serve this county well. And I'm going to allow Susan to tell you a little bit more about what's happening at Allegheny Center. Thank you.
Good evening. I'll go ahead and get Drew to advance to the next slide, and I won't take much of your time. We're Mr. Carter, sorry. I thought, I didn't know you were in control.
We're interchanging.
Okay, all right.
People mistake us all the time.
This first slide is a slide that actually Zach Baraklo, our Vice President of Strategy, created for us, just to show a little bit of the services that we provide here through the Allegheny Center. And I'm not going to read everything to you, but our small business center is located on our main campus, but serves all three counties. Same thing for customized industry training. They're based on main campus, but serve all three counties. We have continuing education here, basic skills. We, of course, are unique in the fact that we have the tuition-free guarantee with the Education Foundation here in Allegheny. I know our other two counties are striving for that type model. We have career coaches in all our high schools, so we have a career coach here at Allegheny High School. We offer our degree programs, our diplomas and our certificates, and our Career and College Promise Program, which is the program that high school students are able to take college classes and receive dual credit for those classes. So if we go on to the Allegheny Center data, the first graph you'll see is our head count comparison for the last five years. And you can see in 1920, which is our most current data, we were up slightly there for head count, so that's good news. And then the next slide shows you just our CCP head count for the last five years, out of that full head count data. And again, those numbers are up slightly for 1920 as well. data. And again, those numbers are up slightly for 1920 as well. So we're very pleased with that. Just as a side note there, we have about 90% of our eligible CCP students taking advantage of those classes right now. So that, that's a good percentage of those students. Okay. Onto Allegheny Center programming. This is just a list of our non-transfer and transfer pathways that we offer here in Allegheny. Currently, our largest program is criminal justice. We have advertising, graphic design. We have business, early childhood education, information technology, both of those programs. We didn't see a lot of interest in this past year, but they'll be coming back next year. Agribusiness will be a new venture for us as a college, and we're going to offer that to our CCP students here in Allegheny as well. Transportation technology, we have a great partnership with the Allegheny County School System. And you know that we don't have the facilities at our site for that. So those classes are held at the high school and those are happening this semester. Building construction and welding are new for us. Building construction is in the basement. Right now we've got an electrical class going on in the second half of this semester. We'll have our HVAC class held there. There's also a plumbing and masonry class that are part of that certificate. That is a nice complement to the instruction that the high school is offering right now with Mike Lyons through the CTE program where he does the sustainable building and the carpentry classes. So that gives them a nice, a nice variety in building construction. And then welding, like Dr. Wilson said, we're thrilled that that building's open. We've got two-day classes and an evening class going on. We have high school students and college students enrolled in those classes. So we're very excited about that. And those were both new this semester. In our transfer programs, we of course have our Associate in Arts Science, our General Ed, our Associate in Nursing, and new, recently new this year is our Associate in Teacher Preparation. So those are options as well. All right. And then workforce development is the next slide, better known as continuing education. We offer Health Science, and you can see the variety of courses we offer. We have done some building construction through continuing education this past summer. We hope to do some welding continuing ed. We've done that in the past at the high school, but we're hoping to be able to do that in our lab in the near future. We've done some different personal enrichment, Leadership Allegheny, which I know they're hoping to have another cohort for that group. So all of that goes through our Workforce Development Division. And then over to the side, included in that is the customized training for industry, the Small Business Center, and then college readiness where students can come and learn the English language a little better or get their high school diploma, GED. And then the next slide is a lot of information that I'm just going to touch, touch on the highlights of this. We've been this semester piloting some different models of instruction. So we have started some mini-master classes. And so for instance, an example of that is our students that are taking the electrical class right now for eight weeks, we'll follow that with an eight-week HVAC course. There's a lot of benefits to a mini-master for a high school student. It's usually easier for them to focus on one class at a time, whereas for an adult, it allows them to expedite their credentials and get that finished a little quicker. In addition to mini-masters, of course, we have full semester courses and we offer those in a variety of delivery methods. We currently don't have seated classes for the most part, but eventually we will go back to that model. We have a blended, partially online, partially face-to-face. Hybrid is a little more online than face-to-face. And then your fully online classes in a synchronous or asynchronous delivery method. And then on to Allegheny Center partnerships. I've already mentioned that we have a good partnership with Allegheny County Schools and the Education Foundation. In addition to that, the Roaring Gap Foundation is a wonderful partner for us that allowed us this year, actually just in November, to open a food pantry at the Allegheny Center for our students. So now all three of our locations have food pantries for our students. You can see what else they help us with by way of scholarships. And they've also helped with our welding and building construction program needs. We partner with the Rotary Club on several things, as well as interact at the high school when they're able to participate. We have, our local staff goes out and volunteers in the community. And then we have a new Allegheny Center Advisory Committee. And that committee met for the first time in October. And the next slide will just give you a list of the individuals that are currently serving on that advisory committee so that we can provide the needed programming for the community. And they help guide that. So our last slide is a young lady that I'm going to let Dr. Cox talk about and finish our presentation. Thank you.
So Monica here is another local girl. And she, she is a student that when I was superintendent up here, I had the benefit of being able to be there at her eighth grade graduation from Pine Creek Elementary School. And then I was superintendent still when she graduated from high school. And she and I both went to Wilkes Community College at the same time. And she enrolled in the nursing program down there. So two years later, I got to be there for her third academic ceremony and got to hand her her nursing degree. After that ceremony, she came over to me and talked to me and said, you know, Dr. Cox, when I was up there in Allegheny in high school, waitressing at Mr. Otto's, I never thought I would be anything more than a waitress at the, and not that there's anything wrong with being a waitress, but that's just as far as she could see herself going. And she said, but through the scholarships I got here and the support I got with the school system and the county, I was able to go and fulfill my dream to get my degree in nursing. And now if you folks need her, she is on call over there at Allegheny Memorial Hospital. So she's come back home and has a family here. And folks, this is what it's all about. It's, it's kids like this that uh, it's why we support education in our community. It's why I do what I do. And it's a fulfilling part of the job when you get to see one come full circle like this. So we'll just end on that note. Thank you all for letting us come tonight.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Cox?
I want to quick, if you, if you don't mind, the, the grant of the tech, for the tech center?
Yes, sir.
Timeline, of course, I know it's got to be turned in, but once if approved, is there, isn't there like a pretty quick launch timeframe for that?
Pretty quick, yes, Mark. So I think we'll know within, I think within a month or so if we're going to, if we're going to get the grant. And if we do get the grant, we're going to be, begin immediately looking toward something in the fall to, to get rolling with it. So it's, it's a pretty quick turnaround. If we, we'll, we'll know pretty quickly if we get it. And if we get it, we're going to be getting to work pretty quickly to implement it.
All right. Well, we're hopeful that it will be awarded.
It'd be a great shot in the arm here for the community. I think if we get it, it's got a lot of, a lot of positives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you all.
Certainly appreciate what you folks do. Your welding shop looks real good.
Yeah, I can't wait till we get through this COVID mess. We're going to have a grand opening event up there. It's really sharp. It looks really nice on the inside too. So.
We appreciate what y'all doing.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Thanks for having us.
Jason Long, Rescue Squad.
Thanks for letting us come tonight, kind of giving you a presentation where we stand at the Rescue Squad. First of all, I'm the Rescue Chief. I'm Jason Long. I'm an Allegheny native. Been here pretty much my whole life. We left when I was young, come back. But here with me tonight, I've got a few captains, a few board members, and our treasurer. If you've got any financial questions, she can help you on the money side. It's the mission of the squad to provide a competent and caring aid to victims of emergencies in our community. To prevention, public education, emergency service, and aggressively, we are aggressively seeking ways to better protect and treat the public we serve. Just to update you on the squad, as of right now, we have 22 members, nine EMTs, six paramedics, one intermediate medic, and 10 technical rescuers, along with six divers. The state mandates four paramedics to be ALS certified in our county to operate our ambulance, and eight technical rescuers to keep the doors open for our heavy rescue. There are several hours that we spend in training. There's a lot of special classes involved with rescue. It's not just certain classes. One class is technical rescue. That contains 120 hours of class. High angle rescue, 64 search, wilderness search and rescue, 60 hours. We also provide swift water rescue, which requires 48 hours of training. Outdoor course rescue, which is 36 hours of training. Vehicle extrication, which is mainly what we do a lot of, is 48 hours. We are trench rescue certified, confined space certified, structural collapse, and dive. Our six divers spend well over 100 hours just to get their certifications. We also provide ALS and BLS service to the county. To become a paramedic, it takes 560 hours of training. To become a basic EMT, it's 240 hours of training. All requires continued education monthly. Each rescue certification requires special and additional equipment. The state requires 36 hours a year of training for rescue departments as well as fire departments. It will take 528 hours total to get all state certifications except dive. With most departments meeting once a month, of average three hours a night, it would take 176 months or 14 and a half years to complete all training. Some months, we spend 40 hours a month just in train at the squad. A lot of citizens do not understand what we do and some think we're part of the paid EMS system. But we're 100% volunteer. We all work Monday through Friday at our jobs, at our homes with our families when we are dispatched out. With members losing good pay and missing their first, child's first birthday to help those in need, you may ask, why would you do that? Because we know we're a valuable part of this community. We feel we have a purpose. And once you do it, you're hooked for life because this is our home. Whether it be someone that has overturned their kayak in New River needing rescue from rising floodwaters, our swift water team will be dispatched. Or the same person being gone underwater, never seen, researching, our dive team will be dispatched. Whether it be a rock climber that's running into problems 400 feet down the face of Stone Mountain, our high angle team will be dispatched. Or an ice rock climber on the ice rock on the parkway that has slipped and fell 200 feet and succumbed to his injuries, our high angle ice team will be dispatched. Whether it be a motor vehicle accident with one or more persons trapped and unable to escape, our heavy rescue, technical rescuers will be ready. To a motor vehicle accident that the vehicle has run off 21 Mountain, 100 feet down the bankment, and it's unsafe to gain access to by our medics, our rope rescuers will be ready to repel rescuers down to those patients. Whether it be an outdoor course resident, accident on many of our farms, to a structural collapse from a national disaster, to a maintenance worker trapped in a pipe, our confined space rescues, rescuers will be ready. To a multiple jurisdiction search of a lost or injured hiker, our search and rescue team will be ready. To firefighters battling a raging fire, our team will be ready to rehab and monitor the safety of our fellow men and women. As primary backup for the county EMS with two ALS ambulants on standby for the next 911 call or standing by at a football game, our paramedics and EMTs will be there. All this, we cover 237 square miles of coverage, the entire county, not just the district. 11,000-plus citizens from one base with no tax base income, and we do it all for free. Allegheny Rescue Squad was dispatched to 1,113 calls in 2020. 384 reactive standbys for county, for our county-paid EMS that were out of service. Some were 24 hours at a time. Squad members spent 768 hours on standbys, averaged 32 standbys a month. And the Rescue Squad transported 24 patients to hospitals out of the 44 times our ambulance was chosen to respond. We do not bill anyone for our service, and we have to replace everything that we use on calls, whether it be medications, narcotics, IV supplies, down to a Band-Aid. All this comes out of the squad's pocket. With the average of $14,000 in 2020 for two ambulances, that's the average we spent on two ambulances, $14,000 last year. With COVID, we have spent an extra $2,500 for extra PPE to help protect the members of our loved ones. Squad members spent a little over 2,500 hours combined in training, work details, and calls in 2020. Our total expenses for 2020 was $133,874.88. With fundraising being wiped out due to COVID-19, our funds have greatly been reduced. If it was not for the great citizen and property owners of Allegheny County with their generous donations, we may very well be in a different position today. As chief, I would like the county budget team to look hard and long into the decisions they're about to make about our budget. And with that being said, do you have any questions before I turn it over to our Board of Director?
Do you have any questions? Bobby?
Did you all receive any money from the COVID, from the federal or from the state level? Nothing went to the Rescue Squad for COVID money?
Nothing.
I think that the town and the county both got some assistance from the state, but none of that was earmarked for the Rescue Squad.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My question is, what happened to the rescue tax? We had a fire tax, we had a rescue tax.
You passed it.
I'm going to let you get an answer to your question before I start.
Passed fire tax.
Included in that was a rescue district. And I thought we set a rate for that also.
Oh, boy.
We need to go back and look at that because I'm sure that we said that the, the rescue district was Allegheny County and we would allocate on that. We need to, we need to go back and look at that. You're right, chief.
I come to you tonight as the Vice Chairman of the Allegheny County Rescue Squad and not the Mayor of Sparta. I myself, along with our chairman that sits in the back, Marion Lees, want to come to you and just ask you as commissioners to, when you do your budget this time around, we need every available dollar that you can get to the Rescue Squad. If you've, if, if anybody in this room has never had an experience, an emergency or whatever, until you have that emergency, you don't know how valuable these folks are. All these folks that sit down here, take a look at their faces. These are volunteers. These are the ones that get up in the middle of the night to answer these calls. These are the ones that get up and go and, and to all these wrecks and emergencies and everything like that. I carry a little scanner with me everywhere I go, just to keep tabs on what's going on. Jason brought it up a few minutes ago, those standbys. Whenever the county has two, two ambulances and one goes out of the county, they automatically go on standby. Am I correct? They are on standby. That means two of our folks have to check in to be at the station, to be ready for an on-call emergency. If another ambulance has to do another transport from AMH to Genesis or to Twin County or to Hugh Chatham, they are the lone dog in the county. And they are volunteers. So that means that all these folks are leaving their jobs to go do a county job. Now, the problem is our paramedics are underpaid up here anyway. We can't keep paramedics in this county. We barely can keep enough paramedics. We just had two join this past month to get our numbers up. Pay for paramedics in this area is ridiculous. That's why they keep going to Ash. That's why they go to Wilkes. That's why they go to Surrey. That's something else that you guys might want to look at down the road. And to my understanding, I think we lost another paramedic this week, changing jobs. We got to look at what's important here. The county, the budget for the, the Rescue Squad last year, I believe, the allocation was $48,000. Am I right?
Last year, 25, 110.
Or 25, 110, and the year before that was?
48.
48. So almost, what, what's that, $23,000 cut from the Rescue Squad. That's something that these guys need. Fundraisers are not guaranteed. Letter drives are not guaranteed to donate, for donations. Some years they're up, some years they're down. And these guys need all the help they can get to keep them doors open, to make sure that we have continued support for. that we have continued support for our folks in our county. We spend so much time on the road with our paramedic unit at EMS doing transports, it is unreal. And we are doing routine transports. So that means it's not really an emergency, it's just routine. If our guys are on call and they get a routine call, that means they're going to be tied up, right? And if, God forbid, an emergency happens, we have nobody and nobody can, nobody else left to answer those emergency calls. Nothing. So I'm coming to you here tonight as a chairman, as a vice chairman, along with my colleagues here in the rescue squad, ask you for your consideration in accepting and donating or allocating a bigger punch to the ticket here. They need help and it comes from the county. It comes from all the citizens of our county. All the citizens are in this. Everybody's got skin in this game. Everybody. So Megan has all your numbers. I think she's turned them over to the county manager before. Am I right? Have you turned those in last year? Or when you first got here, I think she turned over some numbers there. She can give you any updated numbers that you'd like to see from this rescue squad. And just remember, just like what Jason just said, anytime that they use their narcotics, anytime that they use their gas in their vehicles, anytime that they use anything, it comes out of their fund and nobody else pays for that. It comes straight out of their fund. And that's what we got to look at as citizens of this county. We got to make sure we keep this rescue squad going. And I thank you for your time. Appreciate that. If you've got any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them or you can ask Megan something.
At one time, one or two years ago, didn't hospital provide some of those supplies that the rescue squad would use, IVs or stuff along that long?
Yeah, they did it a few years back to Wake Forest took over, then all that changed. They won't allow it to happen.
So they don't, they don't, I'm not saying they don't support. They no longer supply
Correct.
with the stuff that you used to use.
The only thing that we can get is a sheet and a pillowcase and maybe a blanket.
Do you know why that they quit doing that?
I was told because it changed ownership.
Okay. And then a question for Wes. Does the town provide any resources?
Yes, the town also provides funding, allocates funds for Jason. He's also coming to the town meeting next month to present this same presentation to the town.
Chief Long, I have a question for you. Did you state that none of your services you bill to anyone?
Everything's free.
Everything's free. So if someone has a heart attack and the ambulance service comes to get them, then their insurance or whoever, they would be responsible for that. But if you all did that, then there would be no kind of reimbursement at all?
None. No matter what medications we used or the paramedics push medications, all that comes out of the squad's pocket.
Why do they not bill for, why do you?
We don't have a system or a 501(c).
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chairman wants just to say something. Mr. Chairman, if you will.
First of all, you know, thank you for letting us come and present this tonight and to kind of tell you what type of predicament the squad is in right now. But it's-
I can't understand you with your mouth. I'm sorry.
How about now, Bobby? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. To just, you know, a couple of years ago, I was asked to come on as a board member. And me, like a lot of other people in the county, I had no idea what the squad actually did. And I'd say that if you go to the majority of the people in the county, they do not realize the amount of time and the amount of effort that these people here put in. It's unbelievable. And I'm proud to be part of that organization. But it's like the fire department, and I've always said this, you don't know what you have until you need it. And if you ever need it that one time, it's worth every penny that you've ever put into it. Now, a couple of years ago, they replaced the ambulance with a vehicle that was what, 11 years old? It was 11 years old and we replaced it two years ago. Total cost for the squad, what they had to come up with, was $400,000. Out of a population of 11,000. So you can see what we're up against. So we would like, and we respectfully ask, that you look and see what type of assistance that the county can be to the rescue squad because they're here for each and every one of you. They don't ask for anything. Nobody gets paid. Matter of fact, most of them, it costs them money to do what they're doing because they have to get away from their job. They take time off from that. Some of them may be fortunate enough to be paid. Majority are not. So it's a non-paying job. And for the most part, it's a very, it's a job that they get little respect for too. So we thank you for what you could do for us tonight and into the future. But we, like along with Wes and Jason and the rest of the members, we ask that you, that you look and see what can be done to keep this company going. We have a lot of expenses. We just had to replace the roof on the squad building. Jason, we had a water leak up there. It's not as simple as fixing that because it's been leaking for a while and we're going to have to tear out two vanities, redo two bathrooms, basically. Have to be remodeled and everything else. And that all comes out of what money that they're fortunate enough to get from the people of the county. But we thank you for what you are doing. But I guess you could say we'd like to see a little bit more if there's any way possible. Thank you.
I'd just like to comment to you folks. It takes a special, special people to do what you guys do. Takes a lot of dedication, a lot of time and being away from your families and we recognize that. And we just want to thank you for everything you have done and the budget season's coming up and we'll take all this into consideration. Anybody else have any thoughts? Anybody on board?
Well, I believe whenever we were getting the maps done and we paid high country council of government, I believe that they also did us a map, which was basically Allegheny County. We know how to do a fire tax and I believe that we should set and start the wheels in progress for a rescue tax right now. It would, as they said, they benefit the county. And we're not talking about two large attacks to bring in a significant amount of money because we're looking at all the property in Allegheny County. So we'd have to look at that, but I would encourage us as county commissioners to give direction to the county manager, to inquire, let's check those maps, see if we've got a map and see where we can pick up and start towards a rescue tax.
Good. Bobby?
Just look back at our last election, that we had a quarter cent sales tax on there that would have more than supplied all of your needs. And the county voted down that quarter cent sales tax by approximately 22 votes. That would have more, that would have given you more money than you would have needed. So I don't know how a new tax would fly after we just finished a tax on the, for the fire department. And I don't know what amounts you're looking for. I haven't heard an exact amount of what it would take. But it's just disappointing that the people of the county would vote down a quarter cent sales tax, which a majority of the people in the county already pay when they go to another county. They're supporting these other counties. They're supporting their rescue squad. But the only support you get is a little bit from the town and the county and then your fundraising. That quarter cent sales tax would have solved all of your problems.
Anybody else?
Chairman, may I add one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt, but Bobby is absolutely correct. Whenever you do this, I don't know if a tax, a rescue tax is the answer here. You did get the fire tax passed. So all the fire departments are essentially funded now, right, through the fire tax? And that's going to free up some allocations that you were giving to those fire departments before. Is that correct? Because you're not, no longer going to be giving allocations to the fire department. They're just going off the fire tax. Is that correct? So there is some money that was allocated to these other fire departments that may be there to help the rescue squad. They're looking for about $75,000. That's what they need to operate to keep them doors open. $75,000. So.
Like I say, the budget season's coming up and get your numbers together and present it and we'll do the best we can do to accommodate. Because we need your services. Everybody understands that.
Students from Rough Math, it's rounded up to $80,000. Normally, one penny of property tax will bring in approximately $160,000. We're looking for a penny, a half a cent per hundred. So, and that would be guaranteed. Okay, my, for overlook.
Okay. If we're all finished up on this subject, we'll move on down to the introduction of veteran service officer, Marge Gray.
Hello again, some of y'all. My name is Marge Gray. I took on the veteran service officer position. I started this past Tuesday. I actually have started my training as well. There was a training class that had already started and I was fortunate enough to get an email and said if I got caught up over the weekend, I can jump into the class Tuesday. So tomorrow's my first day in class. So I've met a few veterans that have already started coming in, poking their heads in and really, everybody tells me they are so glad I'm here. I was beginning to get a little nervous when I kept hearing that, but now I'm understanding that it's been a while and I'm actually going to be meeting with Mr. Al, who I took his place. He's going to come in and do some talking and try to help me get caught up a little bit too. So a little bit about myself, 12-year veteran, fourth generation military with my family. So a member of the Allegheny County Rescue Squad, chairman of the special, or not chairman, treasurer for the Special Olympics. I'm also a coach for Special Olympics here in Allegheny County. So if you have any questions for me, I'll do my best to answer them.
I'm aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, welcome. Welcome to the, welcome to the.
I think that you need to tell us about some of your background because you bring a lot more to the county than just the VSO officer. You've worked with Red Cross. You have a, I was happy to sit in on your, on your interviews. I think that one thing that we looked at was all your expertise in other fields, stuff that you've done over the past 14, 15 years, that would also be a benefit to the county. And I'm not going to hold it against you because you're in the Navy, because you did move us around a lot and I appreciate that. But tell us a little bit more about yourself.
Okay. February of 99, I was honorably discharged from the military. I blew my knee out, disabled veteran, got 40% disability. Qualified for the vocational rehab program, went through the program, got my bachelor's degree in disaster and emergency management. I've been a volunteer firefighter and EMS for 35-plus years. Always as a volunteer, I've never been paid to be a firefighter or rescue squad. I volunteered with American Red Cross for eight years and then I was hired on for four years, page staff as the disaster program manager for Ardeel County and Mecklenburg County, where we worked with services to armed forces. I am a certified CPR instructor in American Heart and American Red Cross. Anything else that you remember from my resume that you wanted me to touch on?
And I think that adds to the job. Now, you were hired on a part-time basis.
Yes, sir.
But we're looking, I personally am looking at making you back to a full-time position. And I'm hoping that we can find that money in the budget to do that because I know so many veterans have already called me and said they're so glad that there's somebody back in that position. And the county is, depending on the numbers that you hear, but there's roughly 9 to 10% of veterans in this county. And that's a large number of people for one person to serve. And one thing that impressed me about, about yourself was your knowledge of the disability hurdles that a veteran goes through trying to make a claim of how complicated it is. And just because a veteran is told no one time, doesn't mean that that's so. You have to keep fighting and I'm confident that you'll do that.
Yes, sir. My father is a veteran himself. He still lives up in Pennsylvania and I'm his power of attorney, his medical by proxy. I got to put in assisted living. He actually just this weekend got rushed to the hospital for having another heart attack and I'm fighting everything with the VA. So quite familiar about the VA system. On the claimant side, on the veteran side, it's a process. And as I said when we were doing the interview, when somebody says no, it's just another open door. So.
Glad to have you.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome to the team. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good.
Moving on down to general business, land swap the town.
We have a land swap coming from property out at the fairgrounds. So there's a piece of property that I think used to house an old well. And that property is coming back to the county. And then there's a little sliver of property that is going back to the town. So those deeds have been prepared by the county or by the town attorney, Whitney Ivy. And we just had today a plat map of the little sliver that is going to the town that was recorded. So I expect that these deeds will be available for signatures and recording probably sometime this week. So it's just a swap of land from one entity to the other.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any further discussion? Bobby, you got a question? All in favor, raise your hand.
I'm going to vote.
I vote. Export participation.
At the January 19th meeting, Michael talked about, they're in the Tar Heel League passion with Alga County. Asked the board to think about how you wanted to proceed with export. Also spoke with Grayson County's recreation day. Asked him if we could do both. I don't know if that's, but if he joined Grayson, he would be playing Grayson County with, which way to go. We just kind of wanted to get your.
How does that work with the COVID situation with the games and the crowds and the parents?
Michael and I have a Zoom meeting tomorrow with the Tar Heel League to talk about protocols and how other counties are handling that right now.
We'd make a motion to table until after the Zoom meeting so that we've, we have that information to work on.
Motion, your second.
Second, Ted.
Motion second and further discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Next is Mr. David Spicer, Public Works Director.
Mr. Chairman, Board, to come to you this evening, I have prepared- Mr. Chairman, Board, to come to you this evening, I have prepared a grant proposal that will be going into DEQ, provided that it is approved. So with this grant proposal, as you know, we've been working on recycling program and getting that back implemented and up and going within the county, so that we can have a reduction in the waste that goes to the landfill. Of course, recycling, that has not been a full program for a little while now, but we're trying to get that back up and going. So with that, I've had been in discussions, Carter and I both have, and as well as Drew, with DEQ and some of the people that's around in the state, to get some more information about things that we can do and what can be accomplished. So DEQ has this grant, and it's a thirty thousand dollar grant, that they give, and it's matching funds. So it's a twenty percent, which I'll explain what the figures are, but the twenty percent is that we get thirty thousand dollars if approved from the state, the, to put towards a recycling program. So what we've looked at is a co-mingle, so that we take our plastic bottles, our cans, cereal boxes, newspapers, magazines, all sorts of those things. Now, when, it's not, it's not for corrugated cardboard, it's not for trash bags, it's not for some of the other things, but there is things, milk jugs and plastic drink bottles and pop cans and dog food cans and cat food cans, and those things we're able to put in this. So it's a compactor that we're looking at, which is a three-yard compactor, which is a hopper that you put stuff in, and it runs automatically. So once it gets to a certain level, then it takes and packs that into a forty-yard container. So with that, that price on that, total price for a compactor is fifteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars, and two forty-yard oct- uh, octagon compact receivers is thirteen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. So with that, we have a site prep, twenty-five hundred and ninety-five dollars, electrical service for fifteen hundred dollars, and a semiot pad at sixty-eight hundred and forty-six dollars, which brings us to a grand total of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and two dollars. So if we are fortunate enough to receive the money from the state, that will put thirty thousand dollars towards that, which means that the county would need to come up with the nine thousand nine hundred and two dollars.
The, oh, the matching funds, can that money come out of the transfer station funds, or does it have to come out of county money?
By the transfer station fund.
So it wouldn't be a tax increase or anything along that line?
We have a line item within that budget that allows for improvements that we put in for this year, so I would apply that towards that line item.
When people bring in their either bottles or aluminum can or cans, whatever, but they throw in something that doesn't belong there, like your trash bags, if you get in the grocery store, sorts that out, or does it have to be sorted out?
Yes, it does have to be sorted out, and it, it depends upon the location that we choose to transport this material to, and of course, there is a charge for that as well. But the, some figures, some figures that I, I was able to get today is processing fees minus sixty percent, so this one entity would pay us back sixty percent of the recyclable materials that was taken to their facility. Now, if it's clean, which sixty percent has some contaminants in it, okay? If it's clean recyclables, then we're able to obtain seventy to seventy-five percent of the cost or reimbursement from these recycled products. So with that, there is a little bit of savings there to help with that and aid with that. But they, they have the facility, it's dumped out on a conveyor, and the conveyor sends it through, and it goes into different compartments there. We're going to a facility on Friday to observe this actually happening. But my understanding is that it's separated out, it goes into certain piles, and then those are baled up and then taken as recyclable materials to the recycling facilities.
Chairman, may I add something? A lot of these MRS, that these recyclable materials go to, they have a, they're percentage-based, so there's a variance. You know, if you get a couple of plastic bags in with your load, it's not a big deal. It's when you start abusing that, is when they start basically deducting whatever that payment may be by that equivalent percentage. So as long as you've got, you know, a good education, as long as you've got a good system, as long as you've got people that pay attention to what's going in it, it operates okay.
Is there a contract with this, with this company that's going to take the recyclables? Do we sign up for a year or two years, or?
That hasn't been determined yet. Right now, we're in the visitation phase. But if there was some type of arrangement made, there would certainly be some type of agreement that coincides with it.
Anybody else? Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I know as we've talked kind of through some of this, at one time, we talked about we had to actually pay to get rid of the recycled material, but, but you're actually saying that there, it could generate some revenue?
There's still going to be a cost. Now, from, from what information I've been able to gather, there's going to be a cost to this. But what I'm saying is that there is a percentage that can come back to offset the total cost of the recyclable material.
It'll.
It would be reduced somewhat. And, and then, you know, we're, we're looking at other things. If we, if we transport this, these containers ourselves, then we get a pretty good savings on that transport fee. You know, you're looking at anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars, three hundred and fifty dollars, or three hundred and sixty dollars, excuse me, for haul field, haul bill, haul fee.
Right.
So, you know, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty dollars, that's a lot of money to me to pay someone to come and haul off our recyclers, when we could put that towards something that we could use and benefit the county a lot more. So that, there's a lot of things I'm looking at that, that we're going to be presenting to the board shortly.
Just for clarification, I think it's wise to invest into recycling if it, if it costs us. I'm not looking for it to, to make a profit, nothing really that we do, everything we do costs. We make very little in anything, but just for the public, I wanted to make sure that they kind of understand that when we move into this, you know, we got initial investment, and then cost of doing business, to some degree, going forward, once we sort of figure out the lay of the land here. So, but we're, we're hopefully that we can put a program together where we can do something besides what we're doing now, because then we're alleviating tonnage going into the, that we're paying for to get rid of, too, so.
And it's important to keep in mind that that cost of doing business fluctuates each and every week, for that matter.
We, we still have corrugated to get rid of.
Yes, I'm, I'm working on that as well, with corrugated cardboard. I've, I've explored some things today, as a matter of fact, with a company, and we're going to look at our baler and see kind of what our baler needs to be up and running, which our baler is going to be a manual fed. It's, it's manual fed, you're going to have to wrap it manually, and the person that I talked to today was not a very big fan of that because of the dangers that's involved in, in the, the bales when you release the pressure. So we're going to look at that, and, and I, I want to investigate the possibility of using another compactor to put cardboard in, maybe another grant or some help from somewhere else to do that, just for the cardboard itself, and that way then. Cardboard right now is selling at sixty-five dollars a ton. So if, if we have the ability to do it ourselves, we sell that cardboard at sixty-five dollars a ton. Now, there is cost involved in that, too, with truckers, transportation, all of this, but those are things that, that I'll, I'll have put together to be presented to the board at a different date.
At one time, you were looking at getting a permit to burn the brush pile?
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
Sounds pretty definite.
Yeah, that's, that's not, that's not going to happen.
Air quality and.
So I have made arrangements with an individual to come and to grind our brush pile, or as much of it as we can afford right now.
How much is that going to cost us?
It's twenty thousand dollars, will be twenty thousand dollars plus mobilization fees, I think it's twenty-two, twenty-two thousand fifty dollars.
Are we far enough along investigating this on the co-mingle trash to know if that's going to be a break even? Are we still going to have to subsidize that cost?
It's going to have to be subsidized. It's not going to be a break even. It's, it's going to, it's going to require the county putting in a little bit of money. I'm hoping that, that we're going to be able to see a reduction in cost as to being co-mingled in with the regular garbage and hauling to the landfill and paying this amount to get rid of it versus we're going to put it in a compactor and haul it off and only paying this amount. I'm hoping that we can see a little bit of a reduction in the, the actual finished product in the cost.
Be great.
I think you got a motion on the floor, I think.
Motion to authorize.
Got a motion here, a second.
Second.
Motion on the second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
Thank you.
I appreciate all the investigating and work you're doing there, it's, it's going to come together, it's just going to take a little bit of time.
It is, yes, sir.
You've put a lot of, a lot of effort into that.
I'm here to help.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Goldfinger.
All righty. Ms. Rita Miller.
Evening.
Evening.
So I come for you tonight, before you tonight, per statute, have to come to the first Monday meeting in February, and report to you the total amount that remains outstanding on the 2020 tax bills. So I've given you the amount, and then I broke down what that consists of, but the county tax amount, which is what I'm required to report, is five hundred twenty-five thousand seven sixty-five forty-nine, or a collection rate of ninety-four point seven four percent, ninety-seven percent of what we originally levy. The ninety-four percent takes into account any rollbacks we've done, discoveries, things like that, since they, the 2020 bills were originally set out. Upon reporting that, then the board is required to order me to advertise delinquent tax liens and to set the advertising date. We typically do this in April of each year, and we typically do it the third week, so my recommendation would be April the twenty-first of 2021.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommended date.
Okay, here, motion, here, a second.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? April the twenty-first of 2021? All in favor, raise your right hand. Five oh. Okay.
Just about forty thousand or forty-one of that is fire tax.
Everybody, on the twenty-first, you can look and see if your name's in the paper.
It's actually the first step in doing a, a tax foreclosure for property taxes, has to be, has to be included in that lien before you can actually, in the ad, before you can actually advertise.
You're getting harder than the lips on a redheaded woodpecker again.
All right, the next thing I had is our 2021 Board of Equalization and Review, and so as you all know, this is our revaluation year, and we typically schedule two nights for Board of V and R. In the past, we've usually done five to seven. What I, what I would recommend that the board do is to set these dates and set the start time, but let's, don't set a recess time until that last meeting. That way, if we don't have anybody that comes that night, you know, you can, you begin and end the meeting if we don't have anybody. You won't have to sit here for two or three hours. So that would be my recommendation, to set a start time.
Sounds good.
Okay. And now, as far as the dates go, that's, you know, I don't really have a recommendation for that. And in a revalue, in a non-reval year, we have to be finished by the first of May. In a revaluation year, we do not have to be, but for budget purposes, I would recommend we stay with that schedule, just in case we were to have, you know, a large appeal that, that adjusted that tax base significantly.
Okay, what kind of dates we're looking at? First, let's start off with the time. What time you want to start? Let's get that out of the way.
Six o'clock. That give you enough time to feed?
It does.
You still be feeding them?
Oh, it does, man.
Mark, is that good for you?
Yeah, I'll have my feeding done by then.
Only feeding I'll be doing is me. Case eighteen hundred with a end date TBD to be determined.
All right, let's, let's talk about the dates.
What about every, how many are you recommending, Ms. Miller?
Five to seven.
We have two a week, one a week, what you, what you thinking there?
Two a week, or if you wanted to do that the first week, maybe do three that week. Schedule three the next, and if we don't have anybody, like I said, and I could let you know that day, as long as there were three people here, three of you here, to start the meeting, and then if we don't have anyone, we would recess until the next night. It's that last meeting that we would need the adjournment time set.
You recommend that we finish in April?
Would be my preference.
If we.
If we knock out three a week, is that, does that do?
Well, if we look at.
How long they last? How long they last?
It all depends on how many we've got.
Just the commission.
So what we've done in the past is we would set, start like at six o'clock, and we would end around eight. We would schedule that.
So we just need three commissioners, as you said?
Yes.
Historically, it's only been two or three, maybe three people at the most that I can remember.
We don't typically have a lot, but we never, you know, you never know.
Might be the year.
It might be.
I'd like to knock three a week out and get done.
I would like, you know, I'm looking at April, if we do Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, that would be the sixth, seventh, and eighth, and then do Tuesday and Thursdays on the, the next weeks, how would that look?
I'm with me.
For April? Yes. Like to get it finished early, because we have a late snow or something like that. I'm just other than that.
Bobby's kind of tied up on Thursday and Friday, fifteenth and sixteenth of April, he's wide open every other day, including Sunday.
Well, what about Tuesday and Wednesday for the first three weeks in April?
Over me.
So that would be April the sixth, seventh, thirteenth, fourteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first. We would start at six PM, and then on the twenty-first, we would need to set an adjournment time, maybe seven, seven-thirty.
You think we can do it with six meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
If, if we see that that's not going to happen, when you're in a revaluation year, you can extend those meetings with proper advertisement. So if we see that were to be happening, we can add more.
Okay.
Right, does that suit everybody?
So I just wanted to give you a brief revaluation update. The notices went in the mail, and so we had a lot of calls, so we know that folks got them today. If, if you had multiple parcels and you didn't get them all today, they're coming. So we just ask, partly because of COVID this year, we have the website set up, and it's revallalegany.com, that's R-E-V, V as in Victor, allegheny.com. So on that website, you can fill out your appeal form if you're choosing to appeal your property, you can pull up your property record card, and on there, you're going to see your value, you can review your square footage, how many bedrooms, bathrooms. your value, you can review your square footage, how many bedrooms, bathrooms, acreage, you can review all your property characteristics on that property record card. So that's what we ask folks to do, check that out before, you know, just appealing your value. The prior year's value is not on that form. Your revow's not not based on a percentage or amount of change from last the last revow, it's what the market is doing now. So the sales from the last two years are what we're studying to come up with the values. We had some areas that saw increases, we had some areas that saw decreases. We had particular situation where we had in the last revow found that the grade of the house had, they had all been kind of bumped up. We had a meeting within the office with our appraisers and our appraisal consultant did not agree with that, so we had to make some adjustments there. And part of this appeal process, especially with us doing it in-house, if we start getting a lot of appeals from any particular area, that tells us we need to go and look and see, did we miss something? So we want everybody to look at it carefully. But that's that's where we're at right now, you know, you can call, but we're asking for everybody to send their appeal in in writing, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just a point of order, do we need to make a motion on these dates and times we set for these E and R?
Yes, I believe we do. Did.
We didn't.
We did not, but we need to.
No, right. I hear a motion to accept the dates for the.
I make a motion that we set the dates to be April, the first three weeks in April, on Tuesday and Wednesday. If you want specific dates, I can give it to you.
Got a motion to accept the dates. Here's Rita Redd and Mark Second at that. Any other discussion?
And to should probably include the start time on the first, on the meetings and the end time on the last.
1800 hours on the beginning date of 6 April, 2000 hours on the ending date of 21 April. That's 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM. Eastern Standard, no, we will be out.
We gonna leave leave the open end on the closing?
Until that very last day.
The last, I guess, okay.
We said seven.
Right. So 6:00 and late on the last, okay. We're just gonna.
I think seven would be sufficient.
Seven, 7:00 PM was what we agreed on.
Correct.
7:00 PM was the end time for the last day.
Seven, alright.
Is what we discussed.
Okay, alright, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh.
Thank you very much. Anybody has any questions, just give us a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure you'll be getting plenty.
Okay, next up is the courthouse, award the courthouse bids.
Chairman, I'll I'll take that one. In your packet, beginning on page 10, you have a you have the bid documents for the earthquake damage repair for the courthouse. Page 10 is basically the tabulation. We had two respective contractors that that bid it. As I mentioned in a meeting prior, these are specialized repairs, the way that the way that this panned out, that we had two of those interested, Stone Restoration of America, with their low bid at $225,000. I will add, as I mentioned before, this is a little over twice what we estimated. I will tell you that we are pursuing additional funding efforts from from a couple of different sources. I hope that we have those worked out. It seems that we have some strong support from from some of these individuals, and I'll I'll leave it at that at this point. But what I would ask the board to consider is to go ahead and award the earthquake damage bid to the low provider, which is Stone Restoration, in the amount of $225,000.
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion and a second. Questions, Bobby?
Heather looked through this agreement, and we're all okay.
As far as I can tell, there were two two separate ones, but they're pretty much exactly the same. They provided the same information, I'm sure, as required in the bid. It's just now the value of what, you know, which bid the the board would like to pursue.
I just noticed there's a big difference between the two, and are we comfortable with the second company being able to to complete the job?
I am comfortable with the Stone Restoration bid at $225,000. Yes, sir.
Got our references and all that backgrounds and all that done, so that's good.
They're bonded too, aren't they? Yeah, so I mean, they got bond, they got insured.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Stone Restoration. County manager's comments.
Just a couple tonight. First thing is just a quick, we we mentioned, I think at the last meeting also, with with what we just awarded for the earthquake repairs at the courthouse, we will now have that project and the new court facility going well on schedule. We did identify a, I'll call it a dragging on the roof of the house at the last meeting. And I think, if you remember correctly, I mentioned that we're having some some issues with the historical group getting getting certain ones to sign off and and go forward with that. So we have also, now I've made contact with some of our our good friends with the state, they too are going to help us in that discussion. I will tell you that what it appears to be at this point is probably not going to be a metal configuration on that roof. It is probably going to be a PVC type roofing system. So as we get further into that, hopefully, I'll be able to share some photos and some examples of it, but it it looks like tin, but it appears that that may be the route that we're going on that roof replacement. So all three of those projects will soon hopefully be underway. Two other, two other comments. We have completed the tax collection agreement that we talked about at the joint meeting, have passed that on to our attorney first and foremost. We have a, we have something that I guess we've kind of identified with paragraph two that we'd like to dive into a little more. So I hope that we can bring that back to you at your mid-month meeting, which will be well in advance of the next joint meeting, which is what was discussed then, so should be well in advance of that. And the last one is is just a personal comment. Your next meeting is scheduled for February the 15th. My daughter has has finally succeeded in being approved for LASIK eye surgery, and the place in which she has to do that only does it on a Monday, and that's the Monday. So I mentioned, right out of the gate at the meeting, Drew and I, we're often mistaken for each other, so that day, you guys will have Drew to lean on, if that's okay with you guys. I've got to be with her on that day.
I won't picture herself with a beard.
Drew or my daughter?
Drew.
Okay, 'cause I'll work on both.
Okay.
Good luck to your daughter.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Let me go last.
Well, you ain't go last, I gotta go first. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Mark?
I don't really have a lot. I do really wanna thank the, all those at the rescue squad, all those that are involved. Great report, good reports from our college, from Jeff Cox, it's hard for me to call him doctor, sort of going to school with him, but I appreciate all of all of the folks that that serve in our community. There's, as sitting in this position, the the plate's only so big, but it, there's so many more things that go on there that we have to deal with throughout the year, and, you know, what we touch is is a is a fair amount of it, but then there's so many in the community that really extend what we do and reach so many more lives than what we can touch right here, and and we're doing it together, and I'm thankful for all that's doing. And I just, I sitting here listening to our maintenance head sitting there talking, and I tell you, I just, I just wanna publicly thank you for your leadership, your calmness. You have really, I think, stepped up into a to a big role, I mean, as well as our manager has here too, but, you know, he's, I think he's building a good team and got some really good folks that's coming aboard, and and I really think you're one of them, and I I just really appreciate all that you've done, so thank you, Davey.
Bobby?
I'd like to thank our local maintenance staff for getting all the sidewalks for the county cleaned and the parking lot. The town did their their share, they've got a lot of sidewalks to clean this snow, and looks like we're getting more snow. DOT did a great job, and Blue Ridge Electric was out working when it was at the worst, worst of times, but they were out and they kept the county going. My, my thing tonight is, I'm glad we got our veteran service officer installed, and that brings me back to 53 years ago. I was just looking at my calendar, that I was in Vietnam during the Tet Offensive. I just had come back from Hawaii on R and R, and I was the last plane to land at Da Nang before they shut the airport down. When I got off the plane, it was about 5:00 in the evening, and usually you just stick your thumb out and catch a ride back to your unit. My unit was about 30 miles south of, south of Da Nang, and I stood in Dog Patch for about 30 minutes, and trucks and Jeeps going by, and nobody picked me up. So finally, one Jeep slowed down enough so I could jump in, and we finally got back to to the my base. For the next four weeks, I was sent to Chulai, I'd been at Da Nang, I was at Dong Hua, and I was at Wei, and I would like to thank all the Marines. My outfit was a Marine unit, we didn't see anybody else except occasionally the Navy showed up, and I appreciate the Navy. But I just wanted to to say that it was 53 years ago tonight, that all that story. That's it.
John?
Well, I'd like to make, uh, thank the maintenance department also for the efforts that they had. We've been using the Black Building to give the COVID-19 shots. I was, I worked three days last week. It was a challenge, especially whenever it got cold Friday, but the shots are going pretty good. The only problem that we're running into, and I'm not speaking for Appalachian Health, but we had vaccines to give those three days, we were well over 100, but this week, our total allocation is 100 doses. Now, that's first and second. We're better than Wataga and Ash. Ash and Wataga got zero last week, zero this week. The sheriff redirected the vaccines to Charlotte Motor Speedway for a mass inoculation. So hopefully, they've got a lot of people showing up. The odd part about it is, we had people show up from Pennsylvania, Maryland, Wilkes County, all through Virginia, and every one of them was praising us for how efficient we were because there was no line, most, until, at the very start, we would have a line and we would quickly get it through, and then it was, we were waiting on you, you're not waiting on us, we got them in, until I always left at 11:30. But that was it, and they were very happy. Now, how in the world, we're giving shots to people from Pennsylvania, Delaware, Maryland, Wilkes County, and Virginia? I have no idea, but we were, and they were happy for it. One of the things, I've gotta apologize, the people will not be able to see this on TV, but I gave the county manager a heart attack whenever I said I thought we had a rescue tax. I remember we discussed it, and I believe we got a map for that, which is basically Allegheny County, but tunnel vision set in, we were just looking at fire tax, and I'm going through all my reference material, the rescue tax is not in there, we didn't discuss it, but I think that's something that we really need to bring up now. We're, if they if they need $80,000, that's a half a penny as far as, as far as our property tax or the rescue tax, the way we look at it, we can do that. We, we're, we now know the secret, we've got the fire tax in so that we have guaranteed income. These people go out and they put their lives on the line every time they go out. If they're doing high rescue, the the name implies it. If they're doing swift water rescue, they're placing their lives in jeopardy every time they go in that water. If they're doing dives, you don't wanna bring a body in that's been underwater for four or five days. You don't wanna see that, but these people do it, and then they risk their lives doing it. I apologize, I guess I got tunnel vision, I should have been including in, in my efforts, the rescue squad. Doesn't make any difference, they're still out there, they're still volunteering their time, they're putting their life on the line, they're taking money out of their pocket and away from their family, and, you know, if you wanna complain about a rescue tax, well, if you have a heart attack and you need them, just tell them not to come because you don't wanna pay for them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Michelle?
I wanna echo all those sentiments. I personally don't want to be without a, a rescue squad here. I don't think any of us would. It's like, you know, you don't need them until you need them, but a big thank you to all those volunteers that selflessly give them themselves and put their lives on the line for us, so. The only other thing I wanted to mention was, Commissioner Irwin here alluded to it, the COVID vaccines. You know, the general public's probably not aware of this, but I'm aware of it because Virginia Fox, I spoke to her last week, and all of our doses here in Allegheny County in last week and this week were diverted to Charlotte Motor Speedway, to a big event they were having down there. And I just wanna say that that Virginia stood up for us, Deanna stood up for us, and they put their foot down about having those vaccines brought back to us, because, you know, rural lives are no less important than urban lives, and we should get our, our amount that we that we are due. So I wanna give a shout out to those two ladies because they really stood up for us and, you know, made that happen for us. And I think, like you said, Ash County got zero doses this week, so, thank you.
Just echoing what everybody else said, it's, thank those ladies for stepping up for us, and I've often wondered if if the rural communities, not only us, but if rural communities were getting what they were supposed to be getting when you look at a big city where a huge number of population and everybody's in close proximity. So anyway, the vaccines going along good, and I'm thankful County had a facility that they could, we could offer and they could use, and that's that's went over well. That's good, and, and just wanna thank everybody for a good meeting, we had a good workshop prior to the meeting and got some stuff accomplished, and proud of the board, and thank everybody, ladies and gentlemen, both for everything. Heather, do you have anything you wanna add on the legal end?
I'm just happy to be here.
Thank you. We're happy to have you.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, do you hear a second?
Second.
Motion to the second.
Third.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all.